Flood relief. Flood relief is to comply to the United States of America and to the Republic where there stands one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. We're calling over here Eric Bosler, Gerald Diesel. Mr. Mercer. Here. Jamie Blue.
Yes.
Josh McGinn here. Here. Mark O'Beasley. Six here. Next on the agenda is the certification norms which are available when you're reviewing any pledge on the agenda. Next we have the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda of June 21st, 2001 to the [inaudible].
Motion of second, all in favor? All right. The opposed. MSBA board report for June.
Yes, I got it pulled up here.
Hello everyone and welcome to the MSBA board report for the month of June. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the recently concluded 2022 regular session of the Missouri General Assembly. Despite some proposed legislation that could have been detrimental to school boards and public schools, there were some significant positives, including a substantial increase in student transportation funding. It will be the first time since 1991 that the state's share of student transportation is fully funded. MSBA's Director of Governmental Relations, Brandt Shields, tells us several bills aimed at school boards did not cross the finish line this year.
We worked on a lot of issues this year specifically regarding a school board member recall, moving school board member elections to November, and making school boards run on partisan tickets. You know, there was some momentum out there, but really I think we got our message across that Missourians don't need more partisan politics involved in their school board elections. And I think we were very successful in getting that message across.
Shields says an education omnibus bill with more than 30 provisions, including changes to the way literacy is taught, and support for what's known as competency-based education, was passed by the General Assembly. We will be providing you with more details on all the provisions of that bill. Shields says now that the session is over, it's still important for board members and administrators to stay in touch with legislators and candidates for the legislature during this election year.
Absolutely. I believe that our school board members definitely need to get involved with those who are running for office. Because those who are running to represent you in Jefferson City need to know what the concerns and the issues that are going on in your community are. And the best way to find that out is through our school system. Schools are the heartbeats of our communities, and you all are their elected leaders. So please reach out to those who are running for office and get to know them because when it comes time next year when they're voting on important public education bills, they'll have the relationship with you and you'll be able to talk to them about how those issues could affect districts in their hometown.
Shields says the advocacy work of school board members paid significant dividends during this year's legislative session. The legislature did address the issue of teacher pay this year by approving Governor Parsons' recommendation to increase the baseline teacher salary from $25,000 to $38,000 a year through a matching grant program. Under the program, the state would provide local school districts with 70% of the salary costs needed to meet the new minimum starting salary, and local school districts would provide the remaining 30%. While that plan may be helpful to some school districts in the state, much more is needed to improve Missouri's low teacher salaries and help attract and retain teachers in our public schools. MSBA's immediate past president, Linda Doherty, says Missouri needs a sustainable plan for raising teacher salaries across the board.
Our state is facing a teaching shortage, and it will only continue to grow in the future if we do not find practical, sustainable solutions to increase pay for well-deserving teachers. Education is critical to the health of our communities. Teachers train and equip our students with the skills they need to enter the workforce. The workforce availability drives economic development within our state and creates jobs within our communities, which ultimately affects the quality of life for each of our students and families.
Doherty is the president of the NICSa Board of Education that recently passed a resolution urging the state to partner with Missouri's public schools to have the revenue needed to provide long-term sustained salaries for all teachers. A blue ribbon commission established by the State Board of Education, charged with developing recommendations to address teacher recruitment and retention challenges in Missouri, is beginning its work this month. MSBA past president Rhonda Gilstrap of Blue Springs is a member of that blue ribbon commission. MSBA's positions on state and federal education issues are determined by the delegate assembly that will be meeting this coming November. If your school board has a position statement on an issue you would like to submit to the advocacy committee for consideration, you can do so this summer. The advocacy committee reviews those proposals and makes recommendations to the delegate assembly that determines MSBA's positions on issues. Make your plans now to attend the 2022 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators, to be held November 3rd through 6th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature some outstanding general session speakers, along with a wide variety of concurrent sessions, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state. Registration information for the conference will be posted on the MSBA website. And don't forget the 2022 Safe Schools and Colleges Forum, sponsored by MSBA's Center for Education Safety, will be held this year on November 3rd in conjunction with the Annual Conference in Kansas City. Past and present members of local school boards can be nominated for the 2022 Paul Morris Community Service Award. This award is for those who have shown an outstanding commitment to local community service. Nominations will be accepted through Friday, July 1st, and the award will be presented at the MSBA Annual Conference. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
Next we have approval of the consent agenda. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Item as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? All right. The opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have guidelines for public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to this document and respond on a transcript by mail at later date. Board policy of EDP should ask for on public participation in board meetings. Following guidelines and procedures will be followed. And ultimately speak during public participation. A public comment form must be filled out and submitted before the president's private begin a meeting. A public commentary will obviously take fifteen minutes. No member will be able to speak more than once. The ranking speaker will be allowed to go in five minutes.
I do not either.
Next, we have the report of the speaker.
Yes, good evening. A few items here for you. Maybe? There we go. I did want to point out some date changes and some special things that are going to happen in July. These were on the consent agenda, so like I said, I just want to point them out and make sure people are aware. The board is going to have a work session, we think. It's going to be Monday, July 11th. But we're still working with MSBA. He's trying to get with Mike Parnell. He's trying to get one more MSBA presenter to come with him. I think he's having a hard time finding someone. So as soon as he gets the date nailed down, he'll let me know. So for now, he's saying Monday, July 11th with a backup of Tuesday, July 12th. As soon as I have that, I will share that with you for sure. The work session is at 5:00 PM and it will take place here in the Commons area. And it is open to the public. Oh, and the topic, that's the other thing. Sorry, my brain was... The topic that the board is going to receive some additional training on is school finance. We will hold a special board meeting on Monday, July 18th at 4:00 PM. Again, this is an open session meeting. This meeting is being held to interview construction managers at risk as required by board policy. And then I wanted to go ahead and put this on here, and I will remind everyone in July, the August regular board meeting will be pushed back to Tuesday, August 30th. We will hold the tax rate hearing at 7:00 PM, and then the regular meeting will follow as soon as the tax rate hearing has concluded. Pushing, this meeting in August was supposed to be on August 16th, but pushing it back to the 30th will allow us enough time to get all of the information from the county clerk, the county assessor, do all of the calculations, seek approval from the state auditor's office, and have everything ready to present and be accurate. So we appreciate that time as I work with Dr. Taylor and teach him the process. Notes of appreciation. You have some very nice notes in there from some graduates, recipients of our Grow Your Own scholarships, so those are very nice. Followed bus, you have information and a letter from Mike Jokers. They received their annual inspection on February 25th. That's always performed by the Motor Vehicle Inspection Division of the Missouri State Highway Patrol. They did have two rejections on their 43 bus fleet. There was a slightly loose shock, and there was a defroster that was not working. Neither one of those items took those buses out of commission. They were still running and working. So their pass rate was 97%, which is great. And we're always really glad to hear that there's nothing that takes a bus out of operation because that's always a major issue. So again, special thanks to James Ash, Corey Schwint, Debbie Weeberry, Mike Jokers, and Brad and Kristy Mull. They do a great job for us, and they're really easy and wonderful to work with. So really glad to have such a great partnership with them. My next item, I'm actually going to turn it over to Bailey. Bailey's going to do her annual communications update.
Okay. So, hi. Nice to see everyone this evening. I gave my first communications department update last year. I felt that, I mean, I know I'm a one-person team really, but really around our district, I have help from every single school, every single level. So I thought it was important that I give you an overview just of some of the things I oversee, and so I can also help give a shout out to everybody who really helps the communications around the district. Okay, so I know we have some new people, I know you all know me, but I'm Bailey Otto. I'm the Communications Director for the school district. Here is a list of sort of everything under my purview. Obviously, district communications, that's both internal and external communications. Strategic and crisis communications also falls within my arena. These are the areas that I probably spend the most time on in the last few years. I also am public relations and marketing, community relations, district branding and style, which is an area that I'd like to sort of get a little bit more into in the next few years, and we can talk about that in a little bit. Media relations, and then social media coordination. So while I'm the social media coordinator, bless you, I oversee and I actually push out information primarily from the district-level platforms, social media platforms, and the buildings have their own sites and accounts and pages. And I can send things throughout those accounts, but those are primarily done at the building level. Just a quick overview of some of the committees that I have a part in. Facilities Committee, Calendar Committee, Dragon Advisory Team, that's the Superintendent's Advisory Committee. We call it the DAT Team, DAT Committee. It's fun to say. Community Services Forum and Resources to Recovery. This is a group that Stephanie Gegg, our social worker and I, have started to attend. It's once a month, and the Community Services Forum portion of it, we go, talk to several other organizations around town, and everybody just figures out what everyone else has going on. So that's been helpful. The Health Department, the hospital, so many organizations are a part of that forum. So that's been useful. Immediately after that meeting is the Resources to Recovery Group that needs monthly as well. They've recently received a grant for some funding in terms of using it for drug prevention, rehabilitation in our county. So we have a role to play there as well, just kind of discussing how maybe some of those funds could be utilized within the school district. They've reached out to see, you know, what are the needs here? How can they support us in what we're doing? And then the Professional Development Committee. I'm not necessarily a member of all of these committees, some of them. I'm more of a recorder, or I'm just there in terms of being able to answer some questions. But that's kind of an overview of how I split my time with our committees. So goals. These are sort of the four tenants that I strive to reach every year. Each year's a little different. So first and foremost, I always strive to be as transparent as possible, proactively. So if I can answer questions before they're asked, I really love that. Obviously, not always possible, but I feel like everybody enjoys being able to read something before they have to come up with the questions themselves and find out who to ask. Systematic communications, that's an area where I need to kind of get my feet under me a little bit, just being able to make deadlines that I sort of set for myself so that people know when they're going to get particular communications. We'll talk about those in a little bit. Telling our stories, so that's really more of a show, don't tell aspect. Support, supporting and empowering our faculty and staff in representing our district. I do PD each year where for new faculty and staff, we talk about coming in and becoming SGE ambassadors. So essentially, reading the communications from their buildings, from their supervisors, from the district, being in the know, and then that way, when they do receive questions from friends, family members, community members, they might already have some of that information that can give them some context about things that are going on around the district. And I tell them, you know, here's how we share this information. Here are the board briefs. Here are, here's how you can sign up for texts from the district, just so that they know where to go get that information. And then continuing to build trust and strengthen the relationship with families in our community. Okay, so a quick overview of internal communications. So this would be to our employees. We have the SGR2 Family Connection. We launched this, I would say about a year and a half ago. It's an EU newsletter that is written from the superintendent and shared with faculty and staff. We strive, the first year we tried to do this every other month. Our climate survey showed that people actually wanted it a little bit more often, so we're trying to get at least once a month now. And the basic, oh, the basic idea of that EU newsletter is it has a list of five things, and basically five things that you need to know about at this time. So we try to make sure, and then we also, well, I'll get to that in a little bit. So we share that with faculty and staff once a month. Thrill Share is the program we use to send out phone calls, emails, text messages, push notifications. And I can actually kind of show you. It's also linked to our website, so this is what the backend of Thrill Share looks like. Our administrators have access to this. They can go in and make updates, send out communications from their level. We have the live feed, which is on the website, so if you click on live feed... If need be, we can send out the same communication using all of these channels at the same time. They're linked up to the district Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. The live feed is on our website. Push notification, you can pick your lists, your text messages, lists, and voice calls. Typically, just from my perspective, I do like to do each of these separately just because I will mix, like, for instance, the text message might be shorter, the push notification might include a link, the live feed. They're all a little different in my view, however, if I'm on a time crunch, you can just type it once and it'll go to all of those places at the same time, which is very neat. It's helpful. This is also where we kind of build the backend of our website. Whoop. And I'll kind of show you what that looks like. Because it is neat, we had an update this past year where they have a new CMS. So essentially, we have more say and more opportunities to go in and change things, whereas before it was more just, you know, plopping in some text in some areas. Now we can move widgets around, there's different buttons we get to add to the homepage. So over the summer, we're going to be playing around with that a little bit, and you might see some changes there. Okay. And then also email listserv. So we have an all-employees listserv. We also have a listserv by building. So then external communications. Again, Thrill Share. Let's see here. We, you know, for internal and external communications, it can be used for just updates. There's also an athletics section, cancellations, crisis communications, the SGR2 Family Connection. There is a version for faculty-staff, but there's also a version for families and guardians. Sometimes the information overlaps, sometimes it doesn't. It's just depending on what that population needs to know at that time. Again, it's really the five things you need to know, and then some really fun pictures from that month from around the district. Social media accounts, we already mentioned, we've got a district Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and YouTube. Dragon Digest. This is the newsletter that is mailed to all residences within our three zip codes. This year, we had three of them. We had two. We always have a beginning of the year, so an August edition. There's typically a middle-of-the-year edition. This year, that was a Prop SG, it was specific to Prop SG. And then we always do it end-of-the-year as well. Ideally, we'd get four done a year, and maybe we'll get there. This is actually the one that we just finished today, if it's going to let me make it bigger, but this is not a Mac, and I'm not sure how to do that. We're going to try that. Oh, there we go. All right. So this is the edition that we just sent off today for printing. Always make sure we've got all of our schools on the front page. We have a page, the Superintendent's Update. Giving an overview, a table of content, so you know what you're looking at. A big shout out to our retirees and 25-year veterans. Updates on Prop SG. Shout out to our admins who are either new to the district or moving into a new position. This version, I decided to do sort of a programs overview, so we have some shout outs in terms of some STEM programming, some SEL, social emotional learning programming. So be sure to check that out when it hits homes. We also have a page that sort of talks about the positions that we are hiring for. I do want to point this out because throughout the year, we are looking for substitutes, we're looking for cooks, we're looking for custodians. We want you to join our team. So here's some important information on how to apply. There's a page specific to communications. This is everything you can sign up, it's where you can find everything SGR2. Updates on food service for next year, families should watch for the mailer in July. I'm going to use this time to mention that. Please watch for the food service mailer that will be heading to homes in July. Some updates on COVID-19 vaccinations, immunization requirements for students. And then also want to mention that parents and teachers provide free developmental screenings to all children within our county ages three months to five years old, and there's a phone number there as well. So it's a quick overview, that's pretty typical of what one of our Dragon Digest looks like. We have board briefs, which are different from the board minutes. I put these together after board meetings. It gives a little, provides a little bit more context. Sometimes it'll provide quotes, a little bit more background information. So if someone wanted to go in and read a little bit more about the discussions, the initiatives, they can check out the board briefs. Those are also located on our website. SGR2 app, you can download it from either the Apple Store or the Google Play Store. That's also where you'll get your, you can sign up for push notifications by group, dragon alerts. There's a link there for signing up for text messages, news releases. Really just mentions that I create some. And then Vitable is what we use for video. It's actually the platform I use for the kindergarten registration videos that have the cute little cartoons that move. Makes life so easy and fun. Okay, so this is new this year. I decided to create an overview of what my year looks like because my sticky notes weren't getting it. So I just wanted to share this with you because I think, I think it's interesting to see from how I started here a few years ago to what it looks like now. I know it's hard to see, but we do have, it's basically my annual project, so I have it built out by month. We have a back-to-school section, a section for annual communications that need updates, a section for events or initiatives that I help sort of coordinate, and then things that happen sort of on a cyclical cycle, so that could be by month. I also do have it sort of an asterisk by each area that needs its own page that sort of gives a quick rundown of what all is involved in some of those processes. And because that is small and hard to read, our next page gives a little bit of an overview. So these are annual initiatives around our district that I, that I, or that I have some sort of input in on, I suppose. We do sort of larger-scale news release, media release for graduation prom, homecoming. Polar Plunge is an annual event where we do a little bit more marketing. Certified Staff PD, we've talked about several of these. Board of Education election happens every year. We try to get everybody to understand how many people are running, everyone's platforms, and then the things that we need to share every year in terms of like immunizations, free reduced meal information. The VAFSA frenzy at high school. So those are some annual things. Monthly board news, like I mentioned. We also do an employee recognition every month, and the buildings are fantastic. They nominate faculty and staff. They write beautiful explanations and nominations for the people in their buildings and in their departments. They submit those to me, I just plop them in a design, make sure that we share it out. We put those on the homepages of each website. So if you go to any of the school websites, you scroll down, there's like an employee spotlight section that looks like what's up here with the three circles there. We've got our three district staff members of the month in the last three months, so we like to give them a shout out. We also share that on our social media. Board of Education meetings, monthly. We do this video, board briefs. Website updates should be done monthly. They aren't, but we work on it. When I say "we," I mean I just don't get to, but sometimes I do. EU newsletter, like I said, we try to get that out monthly now. Whenever we have a faculty or staff member who has a new baby, we give them a little SG onesie that says Dragon in Training, ask them to snap a photo of the baby in the onesie once the baby fits into the onesies. Sometimes they'll put that. Anyway, so at some point, to send us a picture. And then Kenny Rapp and his classes actually take that photo and laser etch it into Plexiglas, and it's really cute. It's got the information, when and where the baby was born, the name. So that's something that we do that everyone really seems to enjoy. This editorial calendar is another Excel spreadsheet that's fantastic because I have so much help with it. Mrs. Audra Womack at the middle school, her publications class, each year over the summer, I roll this over. Basically, it's just a listing of all of the district calendar events, any holidays, any, you know, like Happy Donut Day. I mean, it is fun things, it's the real things, it's the last day of school, it's everything that we can think of. And then we include over here, there's a key about Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, any way that we could share it. She and her eighth-grade publications class will go through this. They'll pick one or two a month, and then she, at the beginning of the year, I'll go in, I'll introduce them to Canva. We'll have a couple days where we practice design. I tell them some things to look for, maybe Wi-Fi fonts don't look good right next to each other, things like that. And then each month, they'll do one or two of those, they'll all submit them, and then we'll share them out on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. And it is so amazingly helpful because sometimes I'm like, oh my gosh, we have a PD day in two days, I'm not sharing anything out. Oh, Audra had it, the kids had it, and I think they enjoy it, they seem to enjoy it. So it's nice to have that help, and it's neat that they get their work shared on that sort of platform in that way. And here are some examples. So Happy President's Day, that one just looks so good. It was one, it was an example of me going in and saying, hey, here's how you can make some text pop on top of a picture. That's like a three or four-step process within Canva. That kiddo picked it up, used it immediately, and it looks really nice. So these are just some of my favorites from this year, just in terms of being eye-catching. And some of them work better depending on the social media platform, so that's neat as well. And I also want to show this, we won't watch the whole thing, but at SGMS, they did a hype video, and this might be loud, so I apologize. So they put the ideas together, decided what clips they wanted, decided what programs to highlight, stitched it together, did the editing. It's just neat. And this was, I think, one of their first videos. They also did a snow day video recently, which was pretty fun this past year, so that's just something different. And I enjoy working with them, and I think, I think they have a good time. All right. Next, so then, this past year, you know, you think that we've made it to a certain point with COVID, and we come back in the fall, and maybe we hadn't made it to the point that I thought we had. So we had COVID communications again, pretty much from mid- So, we had COVID communications again, pretty much from middle, middle of summer last year, we found out we needed a reopening plan, we did need a reopening plan, but it looked a little different than the year before. So we went ahead, coordinated that, got it rolling, and then throughout the next several months, as you all know, because we bring it up, we brought it up at the board meeting every few months, made sure that we were following guidelines from DESI. At the same time, we had a bond issue on the horizon, so this was my face a few times, I think. But, all joking aside, it's been a really fun year. I enjoy the strategic communications portion of it, and it's definitely been that. So, let's see if I can get, last year, these were the goals that I had set for myself for this year, basically just finishing up the facilities communication plan, and sharing the facilities plan after that committee had put it together and did all of their research, and then building support in terms of communications for a possible bond initiative, so I proceeded that. Communicate, or continued support for the district's response to COVID-19, worked on that as well. Mindfulness, that just kind of talks about bringing it back to my department plan. I didn't really do that, if I'm gonna be honest, we're gonna move that over. And then completing website updates. They're not complete, we did make some progress, we do have a page that's now sort of a one-stop-shop for faculty and staff, which was something that they had been asking for, because everything is in two or three places for ease of access, but sometimes that doesn't make it easier. So, we do have another page on the website now, where it's listed by accounts, resources, and we've had some positive feedback there. So this year, what we did, what I did sort of work on, so continued building awareness of facilities, long-range planning, we created the facilities plan, you've all seen it, I would link it here, but it's large and it won't open, so that's on our district website, if anybody who's watching the video would like to see it. Launched Prop SG communications, the, these are the communications that are located in the public district documents folder on the district website, if anybody would like to go back and look at these. But I do want to mention just a few things that this sort of entailed, because I do have an Excel spreadsheet, but it's not pretty enough to show everybody, so I'm not going to, but I will talk about it. So we had an informational campaign, and that, we broke it down into different tactics, and that talked about logo messaging, what the webpage looked like, different FAQs that could be asked, various, we, Dr. Taylor went and spoke to all of the faculty at all four buildings, went to the faculty meetings. We actually had campus meetings as well, for support staff who would like to come and ask questions, learn about Prop SG. We had flyers, brochures, we did, the Dragon's Digest had some infographics in there as well, just to talk about, you know, the numbers in terms of early childhood education, our tax rate information. We had information about the land acquisition, information that we shared out about voter registration, so we, and then also the e-newsletter that we shared out each month, we had a few versions that would also link to the website for people who had any questions. We also did presentations around town, and when I say "we," I mean Dr. Taylor really ran those presentations, answered questions, gave an overview to various groups, and those, those went well. We were able to answer questions, and if we couldn't answer questions at that time, he circled back with the answer. And then, as you all know, we did have Prop SG pass, seventy, a little over seventy percent of the vote. So I do want to, I know we've mentioned it a few times, but I do want to thank everyone again for their support of our district. This is just a link, again, to the public district documents, COVID-19 communications located there, in case anybody would like to go back and check those out. But we will have updates regarding the start of school in the fall, we will have a reopening plan that we will update regularly. This is the current plan, again, located on the district website, in case anybody would like to go back and check it out. Much of this information will be rolled over, but we will have some important updates. Okay, we've kind of talked about all of these things, I don't want to, all right. And just to kind of circle back, Prop SG, this is the website that we created. It looks the same right now, next week it will not. We will have more updates on this website, we're going to revamp it to where it's a little bit more user-friendly in terms of updates. Because right now, it's really set up to learn about the bond issue and the various components. All of this information will still be available on the site, but it's going to have a different layout. For instance, I would like it to be where all of the updates are right up at the top. Right now, you've got to scroll a bit. But we do have, the last bit of information here is about Prop SG passing. And the most recent Dragon's Digest that I showed you that will be hitting homes at the end of June, we have updates about the CMAR selection process, and there is an update here about that as well. So this will look a little different starting next week, so if anybody needs to go back and check into anything, probably do it now, before we start messing around with it. All right. Oh, and then this is also just a quick overview of the Dragon's Digest version that was specific to Prop SG. And I just want to give a shout-out to everyone who answered my myriad of questions. You know, I'm surrounded by people who know their stuff, and it is fantastic, like I'm, I'm always in awe of how I can reach out, email, text anyone in this district, and I will immediately, I mean, as soon as possible, they will send me the information I need, and I, I am incredibly thankful for it, because sometimes it's last minute. Today was a lot, or yesterday was a lot of last minute, and everyone's fantastic. So, all of this information, all of the information in the Dragon's Digest that isn't specific to Prop SG is due to our fantastic employees, they're just, they, they know their stuff, and I'm just glad that we can get it out there, so that everybody can learn about it. Let's see here, so areas of focus for next year, Prop SG progress. We are going to keep the website. Like I said, it's gonna undergo some updates, but essentially, we're going to have, as, as planning moves forward, as construction begins, we're going to have updates in terms of schematics, visuals, any updates with the early childhood committee that will convene in the fall, all of that will be shared on the website, and I'm, my goal is to have that done on a regular basis, so that everybody knows, okay, every second Friday, you know, it'll be most updated, something to that effect. Continued support for the district's response to COVID-19, so just making sure that we're continuing to communicate proactively as, as we move forward, make sure that we're dotting our i's, crossing our t's, and, and just essentially making sure that we're prepared for, for the fall. This is back to the department plan, we'll get there. Essentially, it's, it's being able to evaluate initiatives as I put them into action, that's something that I think is important. We do have a communications questions included in the climate survey to staff each year, which is helpful, but I do, I do have goals set for other forms of evaluations in terms of communications that I'd like to eventually have in place. And then completing the website updates. So we've got a few department pages we want to finish, curriculum instruction, sort of a business and finance page as well, so those are some things on the horizon. Oh yeah, so this is the next school year. So, we'll have fun. I, I enjoy my GIFs. Yeah, there we go. I know, I know, I was like, oh, some of these might fall flat, but we'll see. Does anybody have any questions for me? All right, well, thank you all. No, like I said, it's, it's, it's a lot of coordination with the people who know what's going on, and I, they are all fantastic. Thank you, I appreciate that, but it is a team effort.
I want to take a moment, you know, she keeps talking about people knowing their stuff. Taking that stuff and organizing it the way that Bailey organizes it is a very difficult task. Several times during that presentation, she mentioned "we created, we created," and what she meant to say was "she created, she created." She has a knack for putting things together and thinking about how it's going to be received in the most appropriate way to get that information presented. So it, it's a pleasure working with her every day, and she's conscientious, she's well-written, she's well-spoken, and she's a hard worker, so she does a great job for our district.
She does a very good job of keeping us in line.
I did want to point out, Bailey was talking about doing a reopening plan for 2022, '23. I think it was last week, we were kind of curious if we were gonna have to do one, and we got the notification from our DESI area supervisor that we need to continue to have a reopening plan, and it needs to be updated at least every six months. So we will bring you the plan in July for 2022, '23, and update it as needed. Okay? This month, we only had a week of school after the last board meeting, so we took principal reports off. Two of our principals are actually on summer vacation right now, the other two, as, as much as they're doing right now, I thought they could probably use a night off. So we went ahead, and I substituted the end-of-year summary, summary reports in this slot, just so you have them all. I'm not going to go through them, because I, if you've taken the time to start looking through them, it would take us hours and hours to go through all of them. Basically, the end-of-year reports are the great things and the summaries of every wonderful thing that happened in these buildings throughout the school year, and with our programs. So, you know, as you have time, look through those, they're, they're just one of those things that makes you smile, and makes your heart feel good, and the work we're doing is right. And then this month, there are no safety reports to share with you. And that, I believe, is the end of my report.
Next, I'm to hear the, we have a question, send the defeats of general obligation refunding bonds.
Yes, in July, it was actually July 2021, the board approved a defeatsment of the general obligation refunding bond series 2020. This was in anticipation for if wholesome did pay their taxes, and have some plan for their bonds for the payments. Since wholesome is protesting their taxes, the tax money that we have on hand and setting for debt service isn't where they thought it was going to be. So Courtney Wegman, she was vice president at L.J. Carter Corporation, she presented to the board last year in July, is recommending that we approve the resolution to rescind that defeatsment and not move forward with it.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution rescinding the authorization made by the Sanctioned County Arts Department of Litigation on July 2020, and prepay it on March 1st, 2025. 2.1 million on our principal's share on March 1st, 2027, and March 1st, 2020. Final application from the bond series 2020.
Motion to second, all in. I'll vote. Next, we have a new business for the child, food service prices.
The U.S. Congress did not extend the Seamless Summer Program. That is the program that allowed school districts throughout the country to offer free meals throughout the entire year to students. So they did not authorize or extend that program, so parents will have to start paying for meals when school starts in August. So anyone who needs to complete a free or reduced lunch application, we have information who, that will be coming in the mail to all of our parents, that we have addresses on file. You can complete the paper application with that mailer, or there is now an online application option for our parents. We just encourage you, fill it out, even if you're not quite sure that you would qualify, see if you qualify for something. If you don't, you know, it doesn't hurt anything, but we need to get those filled out as soon as possible. But, due to the federal pricing requirements, there's a threshold, there's an amount that we need to meet, and we're below it still, but of course, every year it raises. So for the 22, '23 school year, we are recommending increases to our full-pay prices. Reduced breakfast and lunch prices will not increase, so if you look across there, breakfast at the elementary and high schoo-, middle school, high school is 30 cents, if you're on reduced, lunch is 40 cents. If you're on full-pay, breakfast at the elementary, middle school, and high school will be $1.70. Lunch at the elementary will be $3 a day, and at the high school, middle school, it's $3.10. We still do not have the information, we had this similar situation last year, we didn't have the information to do the adult pricing yet, so we're hoping to have it and bring those prices to you in July, like we did last year. So I would recommend that you make these changes, please.
Can you clarify that the, that's the lowest that we could possibly go, correct?
Yes, we have to stay within a certain range, and Lori Roth is the one who does all the calculation, but generally, it's, you're raising it 10 cents.
Okay, do you know what it was the last time we had, right, where students had to pay? I know it's been free for a couple of years, right?
Even though they didn't pay last year, we did have to raise it 10 cents, so that's when it went up to $2.90 and $3.00 for the elementary lunch and the middle school, high school. I'm thinking the last time that they paid, it was probably $2.80? That's my best guess right now, not knowing for sure. Because it's been, it's been a couple of years.
But it's not like we have an option, I mean, that's the base price we can, lowest we can go.
Yes, where we were at last year, $2.90 and $3., we need to go up 10 cents.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve the food service.
Quick question.
Oh, go ahead.
Dr. Flea, do you think that this will impact how many kids are eating in the classroom for breakfast, or?
We think, yes, because the parents are gonna have to start paying. We think less students will be eating our breakfast and lunch, we think more students will start bringing their lunch again.
I kind of anticipate that as well, I guess we'll see what happens.
Yes, and in talking to Jordan Mueller, our food service director, that's her, her projection and anticipation too, we think it's just gonna happen.
Right, okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the food service prices for the 2022, 2023 school year as presented.
I'll second.
I.
Yes, we did not have to put the milk bid out, because last year, you approved a three-year bid, so that, we have two more years on that bid. So we put the bread out, we received a response from Rosier's Country Mark here in St. Genevieve, and Holloway Distribution. On Rosier's bid, they did notify us that there is now a $5.00 delivery charge every time that they deliver, or they would deliver. If you look down and you look at the prices, you see that Country Mark's prices are higher than Holloway's. Even when you get to the wheat, hot dog, and hamburger packets, Holloway only has four packs, but they're 92 cents, so if you made it an eight-pack, you know, it's $1.84 compared to $2.89. So Holloway is cheaper, Holloway is the company that we've worked with this past year, and talking to Jordan, they've been very pleased in the kitchen with the service they receive. So she is recommending, and I'm recommending, that we stay with Holloway for our bread service in 2022, '23.
Where are they located, Dr. Flea?
The address here says Puxico.
Oh, I can see that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the bread bid from Holloway Distributing Incorporated for the 2023 school year as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all in.
Aye.
Yes, so prior to this bid, we had a three-year agreement with Camerons, but we, when we opened the bids this year, we got bids from Camerons and the Bug Guy. And as you see from the prices, when you compare them, the Bug Guy is much cheaper. So I checked with the MAA schools, the Bug Guy is from Marquand, Missouri, to see if any of them used their services, and no one did, but we found out that Perryville School District used them, so I contacted their superintendent. He says they receive great service, they're happy with the services and working with this company. So in talking to Davy Carl, our happy with the services and working with this company. So in talking to Davy Carl, our director of Maintenance Grounds and how, and Custodians, um, he recommends and I recommend that we approve a one-year agreement with the Bug Guy. Um, get him in, show him our facilities, uh, work with them. He did provide a one-time in his bid, um, an exterior spray, which we've never done before. So we may explore, uh, doing that next year and see if that does help and cut down on some of the ants and, and pests that come in that way. But, uh, we are recommending that we go one year with the Bug Guy and see how it goes.
Do we approve the testing for service food from the Bug Guy? That's a good, uh, the, the one time you have to see.
I'll second.
I have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
We vote? We have twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Yes, um, so the twenty-two, twenty-three, it's called fiscal year twenty-three budget, starts on July one. So I am recommending to you that we adopt the current amended budget as the beginning budget for fiscal year twenty-three on July one. We will do amendments in September and in February. Uh, the first amendment in Sep- on September twentieth, uh, that'll give us time to work through the tax rate, um, know the assessed valuation and know how much revenue will come in through local taxes. It'll give us a better idea and a better picture of wha- what state and federal revenues look like and what our expenses truly are going to be for the year. Um, I ask that you approve the step, uh, which is the years of service on the support staff salary schedule. Uh, with that, I'm also recommending that you increase our beginning salaries in each lane by seventy-five cents. This would put our lowest beginning salary at fourteen dollars and six cents. Um, minimum wage moves to twelve dollars an hour in January of twenty-three. Um, so I feel it's important that we keep pushing to get above that fifteen dollars an hour before it actually happens. Um, I also recommend that you approve the step, uh, on this, and this is on the certified salary schedule. Step is years of service and lane, total college hours. Um, along with that, any additional degrees, uh, longevity stipends that our certified staff may have earned. I'm also recommending that you increase the base salary by a thousand dollars. Um, this would put us at forty-two thousand dollars for a beginning teacher's salary. Uh, with this base salary increase, um, I'm asking you to approve the extra duty stipends, which are based off of, they're all a percentage of the certified base salary. And I'm asking that you improve the increase to substitute pay rate and raise it from ninety dollars a day to ninety-five. Um, that last request actually came through our meet and confer process with NEA. So that is a good move and hopefully will attract more subs. Um, I did want to mention, uh, because in the MSBA report, they talked about the thirty-eight-thousand-dollar grant money available to school districts. Since our beginning teacher's salary for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two is forty-one thousand, we are not eligible to receive any of that money. So we will not be applying for that grant. Um, there is also funds for career ladder, any, uh, certified set, uh, salary schedule that has career ladder tied to it. We do not have career ladder at Saint Genevieve, so we will not have access to those funds either. Uh, we will reap the benefits of the transportation funding and we're happy to be able to receive that. But, you know, we will not have access to the other money because they're not options for us. So I did want to point that out and make you aware. I think so too. Yes.
What did you say the beginning was prior to? Did that be forty-one?
It was forty-one last year. For this coming school year, it'd be forty-two thousand.
Give or take a two-point-five percent raise.
Yes.
Make two. And then they step it for three years.
In the M-triple-A, pretty close. I still haven't heard what Central's going to do. Central's always one, like a hundred dollars or something above us. So he's just waiting to see what you do tonight. That's okay. Our longevity and our teachers on the top side. You want to be here. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the following budget items for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Adopt the current amended budget as the budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Increase hourly, hourly pay rates by seventy-five cents and allow regular step movements on the s- support staff salary schedule. Increase the base teacher's salary with a thousand dollars. Allow regular step and lane movements and allow additional degree stipends to be applied for certified staff. Increase extra duty stipends due to the increase of a thousand dollars to the base teacher's salary and increase the substitute pay rate by five dollars per day.
Second.
I have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
You oppose?
I do want to make a comment there, Dave. Um, just as my wife's a teacher, uh, MSBA, since it is allowable as long as it is across the board, it's not individualized to her terror. So make it a point.
Okay.
Next, we have audit engagement letters for Clifton Larson Allen.
Yes, um, typically, I, we don't present these letters to you for approval, but this year I am. Um, last year for the audit, the district paid fifteen thousand, one hundred fifty dollars. Um, with these engagement letters, um, Clifton Larson Allen is raising the fee to nineteen thousand dollars. Uh, so since that's a larger jump than normal, uh, I wanted to make you aware of the change. Um, Dr. Taylor and I will be sometime in January of twenty-three, looking and talking with Clifton Larson Allen to see what their projection is for the audit in twenty, the audit of twenty-three. And to, we'll need to determine if we want to put that out for a request for proposal to see if we can seek services somewhere else. Um, it'll just depend if this is going to be the movement moving forward, like if these are going to be large jumps, or if this is just kind of a one-time thing. Uh, we're not sure of that yet. So I wanted to make you aware of the jump. Um, I do have it set for the September amended budget to increase, um, the amount of money that we're going to put aside for the audit in our expenses. Um, we do have them set to come on site July eleventh through the twelfth, and then they'll be back August twenty-ninth, thirtieth and thirty-first. Um, we work with Nick, I can't say Nick's last name, it starts with a T, but, um, he's very knowledgeable. He's wonderful to work with. Um, so for now, I'm not recommending that we go out, we put this out for proposal, but it's something that we'll definitely look at moving into the future. No, with the market, you know, the employment market right now, um, the jump they're saying is because they've had to give larger pay raises than anticipated, uh, to retain their experienced auditors. So they're having to pass those on to the consumer.
Do you know, do the other M-triple-A schools utilize these people?
No, they do not.
Okay, so this is someone we, we sought out and, I mean, you know, put a bid out at some point in time and found?
Was, we've been with them for a very long time.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't ever remember anyone else doing our audits.
Okay. Are they, um, so I guess it's hard to say if they're a premier auditor without knowing who our competitors are using, our.
Right.
Say competitors, I'm talking like I'm a businessman.
Yes.
Our, our peers, um, who they're using and ensuring that their audits are coming back.
Yes, if we, if we did put it out, you know, an RFP, that, uh, I would make sure to ask those guys who they're using and make sure we sent the information to those firms.
Yeah, I, I think it's, you know, for the year, it's fine, but I would encourage going forward, especially if the other M-triple-A schools aren't using it.
Yes.
At least, you know, and from my perspective, um, sometimes, uh, new blood can be a good thing, finding things that.
Yes.
Somebody else is not finding, so.
Correct.
That's my, uh, finance background coming out. Do you have something to say?
Uh, well, last time we did an audit bid, our current auditors won our bid, so.
Okay.
Pricing-wise, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Little competition is good sometimes.
Okay. So do you need a mo- motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the engagement letters for Clifton Larson Allen LLP to honor the financial statements of the Saint Genevieve County Archery School District for the year ending on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
I have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? Next, we have the card access control update for the door lock system.
Yes, um, we thought for years that, uh, to do the upgrade on our door lock system with our key cards, uh, we were looking at somewhere between a hundred fifty and two-hundred-fifty thousand dollars. And the credit for finding SecureX and coming up with a quality solution definitely goes to Jason Bowman. Uh, Jason, our assistant tech director, has been working on and looking and researching for probably a year and a half. Um, and through his research, he found SecureX. Uh, after comparing all of the information he got from all of these companies, he's very confident, uh, they have a solution, uh, that would not require us to get rid of and replace doors. Um, they have a solution to fix that. I think there may be one or two sets of doors that we need to replace, but we will not have to replace all of them like we were originally told. Um, so we are recommending tonight, uh, that you approve this proposal, um, to update our card access control software and the hardware. Uh, our tech department is going to pull and run all of the wires required for the system and there will be some electrical work that our maintenance guys are going to do. Um, but we can have a new card reader system for sixty-eight thousand dollars. Um, and we're anticipating and hoping that it'll be ready before school starts. Um, if it's not, then pretty shortly thereafter unless we run into issues with supplies, which has happened, right?
Right.
But, um, we don't have to put this out for a bid because SecureX is a division of, um, American digi- digital security. So we can, uh, move forward with this as we're a member of the TIPS National Purchasing Cooperative and so is American Digital Security. So I put all of that information in there so you know why we're not putting it out for a bid.
Is this kind of addressing one of the things in the, uh?
Yes, it would actually pull it off of the bond issue, which would be helpful because right now we're at twenty-one and a half million dollars and we have twenty million. So pulling this off will definitely help that bond issue. It's, yeah. Correct.
Does this, uh, require new key cards?
We think our current key cards will work, but at the beginning of the year, we typically give out new key cards anyway. So, um, it's something that we're going to do with the cards anyway, run new ones and give them out, so.
So, um, I feel like I read, and it's been a week or two since I've read this bid, um, and, and what I counted on my, in my head was, at least at Bloomsdale Elementary, there were, I believe, four, if not five entryways into the building. Um, and I feel like I read that there was maybe, maybe three key card entries there. Um, can, can you talk about that as, as it pertains to, you know, school safety and, you know, I, I think it's a great, great to see the savings there, but I don't want to, um, undermine the fact that me personally, if it costs a hundred thousand dollars to make sure that our kids are safe and all those doors have locks and key cards, that is more important to me than, you know, find, we've got to find a way to get there. So can you talk about, is that factual? Does every entryway have a key card or, and what's, and this isn't, what's, what's the logic behind that?
I think the argument can be made, has been made by some safety, um, evaluations that we've had here on district, that we need to control the flow of students. I know you're talking about Bloomsdale Elementary and they have some challenges out there as well, but if you think about this campus and the number of doors that we have on this campus, allowing students flow through specific doors is very, very important rather than putting a key card on every door and allowing them to come and go as they please. I think that's the idea at Bloomsdale Elementary as well. If you're talking about access, teachers should have keys to the appropriate doors in order to access those key keys, not key cards, um, to be able to access those doors still in addition to the key cards that they have. So I think the three out, three is what you remember?
Three is what I recall reading here, but I'm trying to find it here and, I think it's going fast, so.
It looks like there's two on this report.
Well, there's probably one for the main entry and probably one for the playground, but.
Correct.
It, it, so you think about that, the, the lower playground is K, pre-KK, I believe. Every playground is, you know, I guess, one through five. And then you have the main entry, there's three doors there that are, should be used on a regular basis. I know there's the one at the other end of the building there, um, that takes us to outdoor classroom.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I assume that probably wouldn't be one, um, like you said, mentioned a key. Students aren't flowing in and out of there, but I would think that students are flowing in and out of those three main doors there.
And you also have to remember that while they're out there kindergarten, K through five recess or whatever they are, they have supervisors with them at all times.
Yeah.
And so they have the keys with them at all times.
Yeah.
So that was the thought process. And this is just the first, given the issues that we've had with our current locking system and, um, all the maintenance issues and, and parts issues that we've had, this isn't saying, this is what we're doing and we're done. We're going to start here and then we're going to reassess. And every year, we ask the building administration, where do you need security cameras that we didn't have before? Same goes for these, these door lock systems. Where do you need additional door lock systems? And then we budget for that as we go on.
Yeah.
So we anticipate adding doors, um, because we asked them, we've been asking them and they always, you know, add four or five more doors. And then we go back to our safety reports and talk about student flow and supervision. Um, so it's a balance there. And, and I don't disagree with you that it would, it would be better to have more, but I think starting where we are with what the administration has asked for and then moving up as needed, um, is, is a good step to take.
Yeah, I mean, just look at the commons. I mean, there's, we call it considered three or six doors there. I mean, there's double doors.
Right.
And, um, it's not practical to have everyone there, but, um, I think just legitimately thinking through, you know, there's doors down here and wherever else to make sure that our children are flowing through the same area. And I gue- and I guess the perspective I was thinking of was our staff with the key cards more so than students. And elementary students, like you said, aren't going to Vo-Ag, they're not going to.
Right.
Local music, that sort of thing. So a little different there too. Okay.
I think you mentioned this, uh, uh, staff that work in a particular car in the building have a regular key to have.
Correct. And their key is not like a master key where they can go open every door in the building. Uh, they have a classroom key and then they typically have a key that will open a certain exterior door and like the teacher's work room. So, um, that kind of controls and, and is a safety measure too. Controls the flow.
Yep. I guess, to Josh's point, I just want to reiterate, this is what we need to do right now before kids sit.
Yes, to fix the card access system that we have that is broken and, uh, so we don't have to leave doors unlocked. And we can't find the parts part. Yes.
So our, this is maybe off the topic, but our students, you know, so they're flowing out to Vo-Ag, we're going to say they're going this door here. Can they go out those doors? Are those doors locked at all times?
They can go, they can go out the door.
Okay.
But when the door closes, it locks.
So what about like the store over here down by the cafeteria? Student goes out, can kids come in that way?
That one doesn't have a.
Card reader.
Card reader on it currently.
Yeah.
They've been asking for one. Um, that, I think that entire door area would have to be replaced because that's an old boom type door.
Yes.
And there's additional costs to system.
Yeah.
Yes, so the card reader. Yes, so the card reader, for like the kids going in and out of Vo-Ag, is on the door without electrical.
And they're trying, so to your point, when they come from the forming art center, instead of flowing into three different doors there, they're trying to get them to go in underneath the gym, which has a card reader on it, and get them to flow up through the buildings, because we have people in the hallway during hall passing for supervision.
Yeah.
And cameras.
Yeah. I just know, you know, the door down here, there's a madhouse to split lunch to run through there to get to cafeteria first. It was wide, go through the hall, hallway, so you can just split through there real fast, so.
Well, now it's locked.
Okay.
And all of middle school kids and high school kids have key cards?
Yes, they wear them on a land yard. The grade school kids, we just use them for cafeteria, so they do stay in a certain location, because they're with their teachers.
I make a motion to approve the proposal for the Secure-X, a division of American Digital Security, to update the card access control software and hardware for the door lock system used throughout the district as presented.
I will second that.
Here's my card. Under revised Missouri Statute six-one-zero-point-zero-two-one, I motion that the Board of Education adjourn to a closed meeting with a closed record and a closed vote after a short break for the purpose of discussing and voting upon the following items of business: hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees; scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals; individually and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, except that this exemption shall not apply to the names, positions, salaries, and lengths of service of officers and employees of public agencies once they are employed as such, and the names of private sources donating or contributing money to the salary of a chancellor or president at all public colleges and universities in the state of Missouri, and the amount of money contributed by the source. David Boba?
Yes.
Eric Bosler?
Yes.
Carolyn Diesel, yes. James Kirchner? Jamie Ballou?
Yes.
Josh Gettinger?
Yes.
Carrie, six-oh.